Good evening, everyone. I call this city council meeting to order. May I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Elliott.
Here.
Councilmember Fitz Henry.
Here.
Councilmember Sandahl.
Yeah.
Councilmember Garcia is absent this evening. And Mayor Gottel.
Here. We have one person for the open forum, Mr. Biostad. Would you please come to the...
Good evening. I'm John Biostad, 7016 Harriet Avenue. Here to talk to you tonight about the upcoming Richfield Home and Garden Expo, which is this coming Saturday at Richfield High School from 9:30 to 3:30. We've got a great program in store for you. We've got over 53 professional contractors and suppliers to give you ideas and inspiration. We've got seminars. At 10 o'clock, we've got a seminar called the Richfield Home Energy Squad, something new that the city is behind, tell you how to save money and reduce energy at your house. At 11 o'clock, we've got something of real importance to Richfield people, and that's tree care, tree preservation, with special emphasis on the Emerald Ash Bore. And at noon, we're going to have a seminar on eagle gardening and container gardening. So you can get ready for spring and learn how to make your yard look good with use of less water and something on your patio. The emphasis on the garden this year, all day long, we're going to have a feature called "Ask the Master Gardener." We're going to have people from the Minnesota Master Gardeners Association there all day long to answer your questions, maybe even tell you how to have a green thumb. On the other end of the space that we have, we have the Richfield Garden Club, who is going to be doing something very similar, and they're going to be answering your questions and giving you ideas on how to make Richfield more beautiful as well. The city is going all out for this, and they're going to have people, you can ask an architect, you can ask a remodeling advisor, you can talk to the city inspector, you can talk about licensing and zoning, and the housing specialist is going to be there, and Housing Resource Center, and the Home Energy Squad. So anything regarding your house or your yard, you can have a chance to ask the people who work for the city, and they'll be here to answer your questions. The other feature that we have this year is we're going to be giving away a gas grill. So all you have to do is pick up a little passport when you enter the show, get at least 15 of the vendors to sign off on it, drop it in the box, and you'll be eligible to win a new gas grill. It's a really nice one. It's got a steering feature and everything on it. We just picked it up yesterday. And so we encourage you. It's going to be a nice day. They say it's going to be sunny, a little bit cool, but hey, that's a good reason to come inside on Saturday. So we'll see you all over at the high school for the Richfield Home and Garden Expo from 9:30 to 3:30, and look forward to seeing you all there.
Thank you. Thank you, John. That's great. Could please everybody stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will go around for a council discussion. Hats off to Hometown Hits. I'm actually going to start it off this time, if you don't mind. I usually let the council. I just had the most wonderful experience last night at Menards', and I was just discussing this with Councilmember Fitz Henry before we started the meeting. There was a contractor open house, and I was sworn to secrecy, did not tell everybody it was open. It was only open to contractors, and I got to cut the board there for the opening ceremony for that. So it was a very exciting time, and there were a lot of contractors there. And I talked about Richfield and the work that they'll be doing and the fact that they'll be able to come here. One of the things about this Menard's store, it is the premier store in the entire Twin City. It is larger than any other stores. They have more displays, like of kitchen cabinetry and other things, than any other store. And what was really also unique is they had things priced from all price ranges down to the very small, very affordable, all the way up to the very nice things that you can get. And it's quite an amazing store. On the weekends, they will have a pianist playing there for your entertainment. They also sell a lot of house goods and even some groceries, so if you need to pick up things, and they price it at the same prices as your local grocery store, so you don't pay anymore. This was a wonderful experience. It's a great store. And you know what's even better? I walked around, and about half the people I knew there were Richfield residents employed there. 250 employees there. They hope to bring on about 50 more. So if you're out looking for a nice part-time job or full-time position, I suggest you stop down out there and talk to the manager there, Craig. They're looking for some really great people. So it was a wonderful experience. I'd also like, just for a couple of seconds, I have a couple of Girl Scouts, I think, in here, and it's cookie sales time, so I'd like you to come up to the podium and tell us about what you're doing different this year. This is really cool, what you're doing different with the cookie sales. I'm really excited about that. Please introduce yourself, ladies, and your troop.
Hi, I'm Abby Farnham, and I'm with Troop 11385, and we're seniors.
And my name's Nikki, and I'm from Troop 11404, and we are a troop of cadets. We are here to represent Girl Scouts of the Richfield Wood Lake Service Unit. Tonight, we are here to tell you about the Girl Scout Cookie Sales. The sales run through March 17th. You will find girls selling door-to-door throughout the neighborhood, selling at booths and local businesses. We also encourage you to buy from your local Girl Scouts. Even if you don't want the cookies for yourself, you can always donate them to Cookies for the Community or Overseas Opportunities. They are selling for only $4 a box. We are both selling currently and are happy to take any orders from you tonight or for a later date. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask us, or look online at GirlScoutsRV.org. Thank you.
Now, what's the difference in your cookies? Today, this year, you don't wait for them, right?
No. Since last year, we have them in hand, and we are not...we're starting them back a little later. And then we've also updated the box covers, so there's new covers and new...
I ordered my cookies tonight, and I got them right here, right here. These are the new box covers. I think they're really nice. So if anybody here in the audience loves Girl Scout cookies, don't miss your opportunity. I give these to my grandkids. They're crazy about them. And I give some to the community, because there's a lot of people here who wouldn't get Girl Scout cookies if we didn't. And you guys need to go visit the nursing homes and stuff, right, and deliver those cookies?
Yeah.
So that's a really great service you do in our community.
Also, with our cookies, my troop currently is raising money to go to Savannah, Georgia to go see where the founder lived, Juliet Low, and her house is there, and it's a museum. And you can get a special pin and badge for going and visiting there. And my sister's troop is raising money to go to Italy.
Oh, wow. Really exciting things for you ladies.
Yeah, and then other troops raise money for Girl Scout weekends together, camping trips, and just all-around service unit, like, encampments.
Hmm, that's a good cause.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, ladies. Thanks, and good luck on your sales. Councilmember Fitz Henry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too went and visited Menard's fantastic store. You could get lost in it. It's kind of my new walking path now, just getting through there. And again, I did see a lot of Richfield residents. If you really want to shop, go there now, because everywhere I went, all the...where you looked for cabinets and countertops, they were waiting for somebody to come over so they could try their new computers. So if you get over there now, you'll be able to not wait in line for that. And I think it's fantastic, and I'm glad it's open. The other item I had is I went to the transportation meeting last Wednesday, and I was so impressed by the...all the people that were at that meeting, coming up with ideas and concepts for the 66th Street project in Portland. And I just kind of sat in the background, and we had people from the Chamber of Commerce, a lot of our different committee members from different committees, not just transportation. And it really put the whole thing in perspective. They're looking at it not just from a street aspect, from a whole community aspect. And I was just blown away by some of the things that were happening there. And I really wanted to say that they're going to do a real good job of presenting us an idea or a concept, so... That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember?
Just to follow up, I invited Mr. Biostad to come and speak again on the Richfield Remodelers Home and Garden Show.
I did, too.
Yeah, well, he got a lot of invitations. And it's important, I think, for a couple of reasons. One is what makes Richfield a great place is that people maintain their homes and take care of them, and this is one way. It makes it easy to do. And then the second reason is that this is a great social event. You can go and meet all your neighbors who've all been holed up together because of the bad weather and the snow, and they'll all be there. It's like Old Home Week. So I encourage people to go.
Councilmember?
Thank you. Couple things that are kind of interrelated. I think last week, I got an email from Dave Getner, who was a pretty active participant in Penn Central and the Open Streets last fall. And there's a YouTube posting called "Open Streets" that really does a nice job of interviewing a lot of the participants from Richfield, and also it was combined with the Open Streets Festival up in North Minneapolis. And if you watch it, you'll be impressed with how it presents Richfield, the people that were in the streets, the crowds, the enthusiasm, a lot of the physical activities that were going on. It was really a nice presentation. And along those lines, Mr. Topitzhofer told me tonight that we had reapplied for a grant, and it's been granted, so we're going to get the funding to recreate the open streets once again on Penn Avenue. And I see Tom Rubline out there, and I expect him to carry the load, much like he did last year, now that he's hail and healthy again. I'm really excited about it. I think that last year, we just scratched the surface on the potential and what we can do, and I think this year is going to be even that much better. So I'm really excited about the potential. I'm looking forward to working with all the people that worked so hard to make it a success last year. So once again, I think the community is really going to be proud of what we can put on in that festival, for lack of a better term. Another thing that is just kind of an invitation to the citizens of Richfield, both commercial and residential, there's been a couple examples of some difficulties because of the snow, particularly over the last two or three weeks piling up on the streets and interfering with access to crossroads and stuff. I just suggest that keep an eye on your neighbors and see if they're having difficulties. Help them out. The commercial owners, make sure that your walks are cleared and that people have access to get on and off in the streets and everything. It's just something to ensure that we all stay healthy until the snow goes away. And I think we got a little complacent last year because we didn't get much, so we didn't really have too many difficulties negotiating. This year, it's a little bit harder, so I just ask everybody to keep their eyes open and help out your neighbors if at all possible. So, thank you.
Great idea.
Question, Pat. Do we know the date of the open fest yet?
I don't believe it's been set. I think...I just heard about receiving the grant tonight, so I think we're pretty early in the process. Jim, do you know, or do we anticipate a date we can kind of put out there?
Yes, we know the date. It's the second Sunday of September. I think it's the 16th of September, but that will be the date.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. And I just wanted to say one other thing. We are currently interviewing for the HRA Housing Visioning Task Force, and for those who would still like to put their name in, and we are looking to try to get a really broad participation from our community. If you still wanted to try to do this, please put your name in, fill out the application. If you don't have internet, but you have TV, just come down to the city hall and grab an application, fill it out here. I do want to say that I'm very impressed with the people that we've already interviewed. It's been a really wonderful process so far, and we have great candidates, but I'm sure there's some more great candidates out there. Please don't hesitate to put your name in. This is a short-lived task force, but it's very, very vital and important. You're going to be...we're going to be talking about the vision of what housing is going to be like in the future of Richfield, and we're going to be making policy out of what comes out of this. So it's a very important piece. So thank you to those who already have applied. This time, I'd ask for council approval of the agenda with one caveat, that we remove item F2, item...it would be...excuse me, I take my glasses off so I can see this. Item four.
Was it item E?
F is removed to four? Yeah, that's yours.
Item E is mine, the band shell.
Is that the one? Okay, sorry. Item E, excuse me. Item E to four. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And first, we have the consent calendar with removal of item E.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. The consent calendar, for those in the audience, contains several separate items which are acted upon in one motion, and once the consent calendar has been approved, those items and the recommended actions have also been approved, and no further action on those items is necessary. Tonight, we have several items, even with the removal of item E. We start off with item A, consideration of approval of the first reading of a transitory ordinance providing funding for certain capital improvements from the Social...Special Revenue Fund, and scheduling the public hearing and second reading for March 12, 2013. B is consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing an internal loan for the amount of $311,00483 to fund the final construction costs for the Honoring All Veterans Memorial. Item C is consideration of approval of a resolution providing for the sale of $2,770,000 of general obligation Stormwater Revenue Bonds, Series 2013B, and authorizing the city to enter into credit enhancement program agreement with the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority. Item D is consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing the city to execute membership in the Houston Galveston Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Consortium. Item F is consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing the acceptance of grants and donations received by the Richfield Recreation Services Department, and to authorize the city to administer the funds in accordance with the grant agreements and terms prescribed by the donors. Item G is consideration of approval of the modifications to the Transportation Commission's bylaws to include a non-voting liaison from the resident bicycle advisory group, as recommended by the Transportation Commission. And finally, H, consideration of approval of the purchase orders to Nelson Auto Center in the sum of $105,647.28 plus tax and licenses for four new Ford Interceptor SUVs. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
I'll move the consent calendar?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent calendars approved, and item E.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The reason I had this pulled from the consent calendar, I got a number of phone calls from residents on the east side of Richfield, and they were concerned, when they saw this on the agenda, exactly what we're going to be talking about tonight. And specifically, is the kind of thing I didn't want to have happen to us is the same thing with Pillsbury Commons, where we get out there so far that we can't reverse the decision or make a decision. So they were concerned that this was an item where we'd already decided where it's going to be built, how it's going to be built, and that. So I asked if Mr. Topitzhofer can kind of explain what this resolution is tonight, so we understand, and the people watching tonight.
Madam Mayor and city council members, yeah, I'm glad you pulled it. This is good to explain, just so people are very clear on what this resolution is. I'll first tell you what it is not. It is not approval for a band shell project, and it's not approval to have it in a certain spot. This is specifically tied to a funding cycle. We have a sponsor that has an annual funding cycle, and want to take advantage of trying to raise some money for a band shell. So this resolution will be attached to the funding proposal, and we're going to see if the sponsor is interested in giving us money for the band shell. But it specifically says in our proposal and in this resolution that there's not a site that has been determined. In fact, we're pretty far from deciding that. One thing that I'd mentioned in the staff report is that we had wanted to do a noise study, because we know that airport noise may have an impact on where we put a band shell. And we had received a proposal from an expert. Well, it was very expensive. And the Community Services Commission decided, let's not pay a consultant to lend us an opinion on airport noise. Let's instead, over the next summer or two, tries our existing concert program, try locating it in various spots, and let's survey the performers, let's survey the people watching the concert. So we're trying to get information that way on site selection. So it's going to take us time, and I want to make it very clear that we have not...we're not...we're very far from actually selecting a site.
One other question I would have is if we do solicit these funds, and we choose not to build it, what happens then?
Well, you know, if we are awarded a grant, that would be the time where you, as a city council, would decide whether you want to receive that grant or not. So the particular grant that we're looking at, we would find out much later in the year whether we would get it. So, you know, that's kind of how you look at funding. I mean, you want to try to take advantage of the opportunity and not wait. But, you know, you have to make sure that you do diligence to the planning process behind the project.
Councilmember Elliott, who has a question?
Can I just thank you for the value judgments you and the commission exercised in thinking outside the box and not automatically determining that paying for a consult to do this is the way to go, and rather than that, using the citizens and moving the current music venues around and kind of judge for yourself and get firsthand accounts of that, rather than paying money and have somebody go out and come back with some dry statistics that really don't tell us whether or not it presents a good sound and a good effect for everybody. So I really appreciate thinking outside the box like that, moving forward, and exercising some value judgments on how you approach it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember?
A non-related topic. I just checked the calendar for the Penn Fest, and it's 1, 8, and 15 are the first three Sundays in September.
It's September 15.
Okay, so it's the third Sunday. Thank you.
See, you get congratulations, and then you get called on something.
Yeah, I know. Just a clarification, that's all.
Well, if there's no other comments, I think I'll go ahead and move the item, if that's...so, by motion, approve the resolution showing the city council support for a community band shell, and authorize the Richfield Foundation to submit a formal funding request to potential sponsors to help fund a band shell project.
I'll second. Other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Fitz Henry, you have the first item.
Madam Mayor, before we go on, I just wonder, on a housekeeping issue, you might want to go back and approve the minutes and deal with the excusing Councilmember Garcia as well.
Okay. I will move that we excuse Councilperson Garcia.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My...approval of...then I'll ask for approval of the regular city council meeting of January
22, 2013.
I'll move it.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. City manager, Tom?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know we have some guests in the back room. We're anxious to watch this article move forward. The item under consideration here is a public hearing on improvement of project number CP41007, known as North Richfield Parkway, and consideration of a resolution receiving the feasibility report and ordering the project and prepared plans. The feasibility report, consistent with the direction by the council, approved resolution at the January 22, 2013 city council meeting, a feasibility report for the Richfield Parkway Improvement Project was prepared by the city engineer and is attached. As stated in the resolution, the report provides information regarding the following: whether the proposed improvement is necessary, cost-effective, and feasible; whether it should be made as proposed or in connection with some other improvement; the estimate cost of improvement as recommended; the description of the methodology used in to calculate individual assessments for affected parcels. Ordering of improvement, the Richfield Parkway Improvement Project involves the reconstruction of 17th Street between 63rd and 65th Street to a full Parkway cross-section. Upon order to proceed by the city council, the preliminary design of the Parkway would begin in 2013. The preliminary design phase would include public involvement and coordination with the Three Rivers Park District...Three Rivers Park Regional Trail, excuse me. Construction would occur in 2014 to allow for sufficient time for right-of-way acquisition and for the regional trail construction to occur with the project. Purchase Agreement Contingency. The purchase agreements signed by the residents of 6,300 and 6,400 blocks of 17th Avenue South are contingent upon the city council ordering the Richfield Parkway Improvement Project. Upon approval of the attached resolution, staff and consultants will begin the property closing process with those residents. A petition requesting the improvement of Richfield Parkway between the center line of 65th Street and the center line of 63rd Street was presented and declared to be adequate by the resolution adopted on January 22, 2013. The city council also ordered the preparation of a feasibility report at the January 22, 2013 meeting. Offers contingent on city council ordering the Richfield Parkway Improvement Project have been made to the property owners. Properties with signed offer agreements will begin the closing process after the city council adopts of the resolution ordering the project. Funding. Funding for the improvements, including the Richfield construction and purchase of 17th Avenue parcels, will primarily be provided through special assessment bonds in the amount of $2,9998. Additional funding will be provided by Hanipen County using community work funds in the amount of $627,000. The city attorney has overseen the assessment process and will be available later for questioning. I guess then what I'll do is go ahead and recommend that we open up the...or conduct a public hearing.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Those who wish to come forward can come up to the podium. You'll have approximately three minutes to come speak, if you'd like to come and speak on this particular issue. Residents, anybody want to come up, say anything? Okay, please. Remember to come up and state your name and address, and to sign in before
My name is Bernard Hurley. I live at 1714 17th Avenue. Now, I know this...I'm jumping the gun here a little bit, but I do sort of want to thank the representatives that have come and talked to me at my house. I have not signed. We're still negotiating, and I hope that we can come out. I know that it's pretty difficult to beat city hall, and I'm not intended on beating them, but I hope to come along pretty well with them.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that they're so gorgeous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley. Would anyone else like to come forward? I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed.
Okay, then, Madam Mayor, I recommend that we approve the resolution receiving feasibility report, ordering Richfield Parkway Improvement Project, and preparation of plans.
Second. Any further discussion?
If I may, just a question from Mr. Esling. I see that we've got 10 signed agreements that we'll begin negotiating on after...or begin...
that we'll begin negotiating on after, or begin closing process after, after tonight. I'm just wondering, I know Mr. Hurley is still negotiating and talking with, with the city. I'm wondering what the status is of the, the other non-signee.
Okay, there's, so there's ten tonight, that leaves two. The Hurleys are still reviewing theirs. We got a signed agreement from the eleventh one last Friday that didn't get into the packet in time, that that'll be for the council probably next meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
That'd be great. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Elliott, you have the next item.
Thank you, Mayor. This item for consideration is a resolution approving agreements for the purchase of certain properties located on Seventeenth Avenue for the Richfield Parkway Improvement Project. The Richfield Parkway Improvement Project requires additional right-of-way for construction of the full Parkway section. Twelve single-family homes will need to be acquired. Appraisal reports were prepared for all twelve properties. The city public staffs, the city public work staff and the Right-Awake consultant have successfully negotiated purchase agreements with ten of the twelve property owners. All of the agreements are contingent on City Council approval of the improvement project and approval of the purchase agreements. The purchase agreements for three properties, sixty-three-twenty, sixty-four-oh-eight, and sixty-four-twenty-six, Seventeenth Avenue, are also contingent on mortgagee approval of the purchase price. Negotiated purchase prices are all equal to the value as appraised by the city's independent appraisers. The purchase price amounts for each property are listed in the attached resolution. The total purchase price for the ten properties is one million six hundred and seven thousand dollars. Negotiations continue with the remaining two property owners, and the city staff will bring those proposed purchases back to the City Council for consideration at a future date. That being said, we know that there's eleven purchase agreements, and I'm, and I'm confident that Mr. Hurley and the city are going to arrive at a mutually equitable resolution in that one, and we're, we're ready to move forward. With that being said, at this time, I would move to approve a resolution approving agreement for the purchase of certain properties located on Seventeenth Avenue for the Richfield Parkway Improvement Project.
Second. Any discussion, I know.
Unanimity there, right?
Yes, there is, there is. We'll move this forward. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is a consideration of an agreement with Hennepin County for the awarding and use of the county funding to, for costs associated with the Richfield Parkway. Hennepin County has been an important partner, a partner in the development of the Cedar Point Development Area, and has assisted public infrastructure from the beginning of this project. Hennepin County funding helped with both the acquisition of homes and the construction of the roundabout. In addition, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand in, in previous county funding that was encumbered but never spent, the Hennepin County Board of Commissioners has approved two hundred and fifty thousand from both its twenty-twelve and twenty-thirteen capital budgets toward costs associated with Richfield Parkway. Specifically, these funds totaling six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars must be used for appraisals, property acquisitions, relocation expenses, environmental remediation, and demolitions. The City Council's approved the construction of the Richfield Parkway between Sixty-third and Sixty-six Streets. The City Council has directed staff to seek outside funding and assessment for the property costs. Based on the status of negotiations with homeowners and the ongoing process for securing additional city funding, the funds governed by the agreement may be needed soon. The Hennepin County Board must formally consider this agreement prior to its execution. They are scheduled to do so on April ninth, two thousand thirteen meeting. I just want to say, you know, we've done a lot of work with Hennepin County, and every time I meet with Commissioner Johnson, he, he always steps forward for us. So I just, and I want to thank staff, too, for, for going and seeking these funds for us. We appreciate this. This really helps the city in general. So, thank you for those great relations, and I hope we continue this partnership. So at this time, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Hennepin County for the awarding and the use of county funding for costs associated with Richfield Parkway.
Second.
Any other discussion, comments? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City Manager?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, just a couple of quick things. One, to clarify, the Transportation Commission meetings where the county road visioning process is being discussed, we were, we posted it as a possible quorum. I thought, we weren't sure how many council members would be there. And I'm just wondering, is that something you'd want us to do in the future, or not? I mean,
I've been going to some of these, so yes, and I think.
Okay, so we'll keep on.
I think it's appropriate.
Sue was there.
All right, so we'll post them as a possible quorum. And then finally, I attended the Met Council State of the Region address on Monday, and was gratified to hear that in the remarks, in the address, actually, Richfield was specifically mentioned for our work with development in our community, especially as it relates to transit. So, one of the few cities individually mentioned.
It's always nice. Any other items?
No, that would take care of it.
Thank you. Claims and payroll? I'll move. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seeing no further action, I'll call this meeting adjourned. Wow. I know.
All parts.